I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Andy. All right, so first up, this public comment. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, they can just give their name and address for the record. I would appreciate it.
Hi, Cynthia Marshall, 45 Post Hill Road. Just a couple of points here that I think we need to bring up, but busy. The tax base in this town is based on our census and because we were under 10,000 population, yeah, it's my fourth ones who set the tax rate. The new census is not going to be out until this fall for the town, I thought. And I feel that whatever cap is in the future with the tax rate, we're setting that that business owners, uncoy should not be, they should reduce themselves from setting the tax. I mean, first residential versus business, that's the first thing. The second thing, the last meeting, the appointment of the new school committee member. I just feel that there maybe should have been more interest in a candidate that was was more interested in education than in sports. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Acknowledged payable warrant 2203. Oh, I'm so sorry. Do we have anyone on Zoom for public comment?
Yes, Joanne.
I'm sorry, Joanne?
Joanne, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I did, sorry.
No problem.
I have three questions. The first, oh, I'm sorry. Joanne LeBlanc, 38 Reservoir Road.
Thank you.
At the last select board meeting, I asked about the email notifications because I wasn't receiving anything as far as agenda or minutes anymore, and you guys were going to check into it to see why. Anybody have time to do that? Because I'm still not getting them.
I'll be honest with you, I don't have an answer, but I'll reach out to you tomorrow with that.
Okay.
To find out where you are at. I know they were looking at it.
Okay. Second question is, is why are some of the board meetings hybrid and some of them are in person only? There was a situation either, I think it was two weeks ago, where I wanted to go to more than one meeting, and some were hybrid and some were in person only. And so it prevented me from going to the in-person ones that I would have cared to go to. And for consistency and for lack of confusion, I would think it would be easier if they were all one or the other. And then I couldn't go to a conservation commission meeting a couple of weeks ago because it was a bad link and it didn't work, so I couldn't get in. So I don't know. I'm sorry?
I believe we've discussed that under old business later. In that staff, it is different. Everyone's a little different with these boards and commissions anyways, but we'll have another healthy discussion about that later on.
Okay. And then the last question is, do all the committees do their minutes, both recorded and in paper? Because, for instance, this is just one of a few examples. The last planning board minutes that are on the computer, the town's website, is from May 25th. Now, if I want to go back and reference something, I don't want to go back and listen to all the audio recordings because they're like two or three hours each. So is there a reason why some committees aren't doing them on, you know, hard copy and just audio, or they just not caught up?
They're just not caught up, I believe. We've had that problem a few years back with the select board, and it took us a whole year to get caught up, unfortunately. So we've been doing it just right, but there are some other boards and commissions at times that seem to be a little, well, there are volunteers, as you know, so a lot of times, a lot of that stuff just doesn't get done as quick as you would like.
Yeah, because if I miss a meeting, I want to go back and look at the last minutes, then they're not there, then I don't know what's going on.
Sure, and usually it takes a few weeks, right? Because they have to approve them, and then they'll go and have them back at the next meeting to be approved once they like the way they sound. So it could always take at least a month before they actually make it into the computer system.
Okay, so again, the planning board, the law firm, May 25th.
No, understood, and I will look into that also.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. How do we sound?
I was going to say, can we break protocol and ask Joanne how we're doing? This is, we're trying this out tonight? This is a new way of us doing hybrid?
I did, I did a chat, but I couldn't hear the person that was at the town hall talking. Very choppy. But you sound great right now.
Good to know.
So Mrs. Marshall, we couldn't hear you very good.
Mrs. Marshall, will you start talking again?
Joanne, can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulgence, I appreciate it.
All right, so sorry about that. We got public comments.
Anyone else?
How many are on?
Right now, three or four.
Oh, good to hear. That's always nice to know. Acknowledged payable warrant 2203B dated 7/27/21 in the amount of Acknowledged payable warrant 2203 dated 8/2021 in the amount of $261,405.52. Next, the approval for minutes for session 7/26/21.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Doug Mobin will second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, Doug Mobin, aye.
And that was for open session. And then we have executive session dated 7/26/21?
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mobin will second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, Doug Mobin, aye.
Okay. Next up is approval of a one-day liquor license for Rods and Mods Classic Car Show at Wally Park on 8/28/2021. The range date is 8/29/2021. Any discussion?
Yeah, I am. You know, I've read it over, you know, at Wally Park, which is a park, and of course, we have kids up there and things like that. But the map doesn't delineate where the fenced-in area is where the alcohol will be served and consumed. And I think before we approve anything like this, we better, we make every other board and commission or any other user do that. And I see there's a name of an elected official on here, so I don't want anybody to think the elected officials get preferential treatment, so.
Am I on that?
I would, I would ask that that be reviewed by Chief Landis and that it be updated before we do any updates.
Okay. And I believe we have plenty of time to do that, because it's the 28th, so.
Correct. All right. Your next move is the 24th. Four days.
What's that?
Four days before the year.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm sure once it's updated, it'll be fine. All right, so the motion to table.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
I'll second it. Joe DDI?
Russ Fox, aye.
That's it. And one extension. And I am listed on this application somewhere as a food vendor, just so no one blows up later and says that the selectman had something else on, but I am listed. So, or move it, just so we're all aware. Right chair to sign Southwood Fire Department Chief Contract Amendment Number One.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mobin will second the motion.
All right, all those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin.
Approve updated select board protocols to reflect board name change. So we've got, I had done a mail a while back and regards to some verbiage that the gentleman thought wasn't right, and Carl looked into it and corrected it. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's one of those things we've been updating.
Yep.
Substituting the word selectmen with select board as we update stuff, but this one came to you as an email through Citizen.
Yep.
So we went ahead and updated it sooner. So that is the extent of the.
So do we actually make a motion to approve that?
Yeah, you'd have to, if you wanted, just having to do a second reading, because really, all you did was update the agenda-related information. You could do that with a unanimous vote.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mobin will second the motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Authorized town, authorized town planner hire approval MGL 268A disclosure and SMD status for John Goddard.
Yeah, here's your list of writings.
So I'm going to make a motion for each one of these?
Yep.
All right.
All right, Russ Fox will make a motion to offer employment to John Goddard contingent upon physical and other requirements for the town planner position. Second.
All those in favor? Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Motion to authorize the board to sign a letter of understanding for Mr. Goddard.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Russ Fox will make a motion to authorize the MGL Chapter 268A disclosures including, but not limited to subsections 20D, 23B, 2, and 19 for the town planner and DPW stormwater coordinator roles. Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Russ Fox will make a motion to designate John Goddard for special municipal employee status for both positions stated above. Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Thank you. Review building and grounds supervisor job add and prepare to post vacancy.
I just had one thing that, or a couple of things that I'd like to throw out. Under nature of position, I think we can remove all the new libraries and just put down the library.
Absolutely.
And then I was underneath, we've just talked about this, and I think it's a good idea that since we do have staff that work up at Wally Park, and so we don't have really anyone that is able to oversee the employees for the rail trail, that we work with Park and Rec and make that part of this job description, not a subsection. Supervisor buildings and grounds supervisors, custodial maintenance staff at all town buildings and town-owned park and recreation facilities, if necessary. I think we should remove that, make it part of the main body.
Yes, I think we, I think I talked to Carl about that at length. Could kind of clean up while we have the time, because it's time to do it.
I mean, this, I mean, we've already started. We might as well go the whole distance and have someone responsible that can oversee the employees that are doing the mowing at the park, mowing at the rail trail, the brush removal, things like that. I mean, we've taken little steps to make the giant leap.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest problem is we have a part-time secretary that does a lot over there, but when there's a mission, which is not on, it's not her fault. So at least if there was someone in the building that could control the situation, whether it may or may not be.
I think we have, right, not to interrupt, but a better chain of command.
Well, yeah. Mobin?
Okay. So Russell, where did you want to insert that new word?
Well, what I would do, Carl, is instead of having that line below.
Yeah, where it says Ian Town Home Park.
You know, I would just delete that and just specify, you know, when we're doing the listing, you know, put it down in the listing.
Under the essential duties?
Correct. Well, also make it part of the nature of the position also. In other words, the supervisor building grounds and coordination of the department may be responsible.
Right, after the word libraries, you could put it there.
Correct.
Parks and Rec grounds. Because number, number two pretty much covers it in the first sentence.
Right.
It does, but we just never took, you know, took over the mowing, helps with the mowing up there.
Right.
But I just mean someone to, you know, I mean, it would still be under their budget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes. Yeah, and I did reach out to Park and Rec, they're not going to have a meeting for a few more weeks this week, so. So as soon as she knows, she will let me know.
Great.
So I have some other things.
Hold off on finalizing this until that meeting happens? Are we going to make these edits and then advertise the position?
That is two, that's.
I, look, I think that it'd be all right to edit and advertise the position, you know, let the chairman follow up conversations with their chairman, but talking to people individually, they don't have the time to oversee this, and I believe, obviously, if our time secretary doesn't have the time to go out there to see what's going on. So I think it's, it's in the best interest of the town of Southwood and the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
And we need to get this thing advertised. We've got to fill that position.
So we need a motion for that, Carl?
To approve the job description edit as amended and to authorize it to be posted.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Accept shirt left children's services, Inc., library grant in the amount of $1,110.32.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Accept library trustee resignation Carol.
Here.
And post vacancy. So a motion to accept the resignation?
I don't think we need a motion, do we? Mr. Steinhardt, she's resigning.
She's accepted.
She's accepted.
Yeah. You have to go through the process to post it. It may be the remaining members of the library trustees with the three select board members.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we post and coordinate. It's time to meet with the other members of the library, elected members of the library.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Thanks. I have this, I don't know where this came from.
That's that. That's, that's this one. That's this one. This is for Nick Reeder.
Gotcha, I don't have any. Someone have to run it. Authorized chairman to sign BBPC CD, CDBG loans ordination for 99 acre street properties.
Yeah. Russ Fox will make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Next up is PVPC invoice number 16 FY19 in the amount of $1,884.28.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mobin, second.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Okay, then next up PVPC invoice number one FY20 in the amounts of $4,353.98.
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Doug Mobin, a second.
In favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
All right, next up I have new business, department heads, department head goals, objectives, input by select board.
Right, you have copies of everybody's stuff, so this is your opportunity within the next week or two to provide inputs. You want to make sure that any department head needs to be following so that they align with the goals and objectives that you're setting for yourselves.
Okay. So we're going to discuss that in two weeks?
No, it'd be good if you, if individual board members gave me an idea for each department of what things they wanted them to be doing, as long as it was consistent with your stuff, then we would incorporate them into them by amendment. What's proposed by the department that's official year 2021.
So we need to reach out to them the next day.
Yes.
Shouldn't stop for a day or two. Okay. Anything else for new business?
I don't know if it's the world. So during the most recent ConCom meeting, someone made a very eloquent presentation and did a very thorough study of permitted and unpermitted docks and boats and vessels on the lake. Obviously spent a lot of time doing it. One of his recommendations was to, as the current agreement that we have with our neighbors is due to expire sometime next year, that there be a substantial change in the evaluation of that agreement going forward. I just wanted to let you know that I sent an email to the chair at the ConCom to provide to Mr. Cheever, and as he goes through that analysis, is what was the receipts from the residents on the lake in the town of Southfield in the five years leading up to the adoption of the agreement that we executed with Southfield, so that they could have some perspective perhaps around what those dollar amounts look like and the level of compliance that they've received up till now, from then, from then until now? Because I think that's part of the discussion that happened amongst myself, the ConCom coordinator at the time, lake management and others, and the harbor master as we executed that agreement. So it's a worthy thing, he has some great points to come to bring up with that, but being that that was a multi-state, multi-jurisdictional agreement, that they should look at that in perspective.
So what do you need from us?
Nothing, kind of FYI or new business that we should carry, because it was an agreement executed by the select boards of both towns.
Sure.
Should we place that under goals and objectives?
It was your and mine. Yeah, well, sorry. I think that might be a good one to go under goals and objectives, right? To work with ConCom and lake management and.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest we write it down right now before we.
Yeah.
That's one of my.
Restating.
Yeah, so it's in your thumb, don't worry. Yeah.
No, Mr. Cheever spent an awful lot of time doing that work, much appreciated, and, but I, I recall from the negotiations and the discussions, when that thing came in, the level of compliance was low.
Yes.
And, and it's a fair argument, people talk about, you know, they're not represented here, but they're being taxed here. The waters are the Commonwealth of Mass.
Taxation of representation.
But fact is, if that is a great pond in the Commonwealth, they just happen to abut it. So it's a good conversation that needs to be carried forward.
Right, on the, on the successor agreement of the future.
Correct.
Anything else for the business?
No, sir.
Are there any new business?
No, I have all of them.
Okay. All right, old business, ConCom coordinator job description update and approval of host. So I did meet with a couple of gentlemen on that. Discuss maybe trying to merge, and I got, it was a good discussion, but quite honestly, they, they really feel that if they add another gentleman, they could probably give them 40 hours a week, never mind trying to morph something. So I don't see that going anywhere, like we had focused. So I wouldn't hold up this for any more discussion on that. I was to meet with Park and Rec also, of course, and they're a couple of weeks out anyways.
Still needs to happen around that. But, I mean, the ConCom piece, I, I saw the meeting that they, they.
Oh, they bring it up?
Oh, yeah.
Oh. But was I in a good light?
Of course.
Not good.
Well, just. They, they didn't see, you know, it was a good topic to discuss, the hours and everything else, but they don't see it.
They don't see it, okay.
They think it is too, and I don't want to speak for that board, but just watching the video that they seem to think that that's a.
A full-time position.
And, and it's a very different discipline than what that. So it was worth having a conversation around it.
And it really was, and we did have a nice talk about it in general, so.
Well, this job description that I have in front of you was a result of being updated by the chairman and vice chairperson, myself at Labor Council.
Okay. And they approved that they were happy with the post, with the job description?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We worked out the line.
All right. Any issues?
No. So I'll make a motion that we post into a dock, the job description, into a dock, the job description. Russ Fox.
Doug Mobin, second motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Main change Southwood Road to Iron Horse.
Yep, that hearing is going to be on September 13th.
Wonderful.
We've worked out the dates, and the council has worked with our office to develop a hearing notice in terms of articles in the newspaper and local policing and hand-delivered to all the affected bars.
Okay.
Then we'll be in any minute.
Green energy program and town fuel efficiency vehicle policy.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the, we did get the final inputs from all the different departments, and now we're waiting for the find a available commission to send it back to us so that we can bring it before you.
Medical building vacancy.
Not, no one has gotten back to me in long. I think we have a tough road to hold.
Understood. Appointments for town boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman's last, I think our last meeting, I did go to the end of the Board of Appeals meeting, and the Board of Appeals reorganized, and they have a new chair and vice chair, and so I want to congratulate both of them and also thank the former chair for his many years of service as the chair, and he is going to continue, obviously, on the board, and has a wealth of knowledge to deliver to the new chairman and vice chair, but I think that's a good, a good step for that board as they have a lot of work to do coming up as well.
Sure.
So that being said, I think there was, I, I think we should make a motion to reappoint that board, because I don't think we did yet.
Yeah, okay. And just for clarification, you know, and I, I know we still don't have that software up and running yet that we purchased, but last year we designated by statute a three-year position, a two-year position, a one-year position, and the paper in front of me has it all, everybody one year. So if you make that motion, I think we need to assign a three, two, one to the permanent members and just a one year for the associate. So I would, I would suggest the chairman three years, vice chairman two years, the other members one year, and the associate members one year.
Yep.
And that would comply with state statute.
I will make that motion. So the appointment, I believe, is Chris Mastiani is for a three-year, William Liz for a two-year, Paul Gregoire for a one-year, and then associate members, Thomas Stapleton and Michael Parent for one year as associate members on the Board of Appeals.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
All those in favor, Joe DDI.
Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
And just for clarification, are we any closer to having that software up and running, Carl?
Yes. I think she's, town clerk would be willing to come in at a future date or to submit something to.
Okay.
Yeah, I think once it's done, just, as long as we're all right here, right?
Right, and, and we can make sure to edit.
Because that, that would be, that would be probably one of the things that she wants to make sure that we need to address is what you were just doing now.
Yeah, because.
The durations of the appointments.
Right, and that's, and the historical commission chairman approached me, basically the same thing, that you know, and I don't know if it's by statute, I didn't research that, but it's probably a good idea to have a three, two, one. You know, or we'll have to do a couple of threes, a couple of twos and a one or something like that. But we can figure that out when we make our appointments. I mean, some are, are fine with just one-year appointments because they're advisory committees and they're not by statute. So I don't want to run the others tonight or. I wasn't really prepared.
Move on.
To do them tonight.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no.
We went to that meeting last week.
If we keep chipping away, we keep chipping away and we'll get them done.
And that, you know, that board had been in front of us. I'd also like to, if it pleases the chair, to reappoint the high-speed internet sub as such as it was because we do want to schedule a meeting. So that one consisted of Chris Floyd, Alicia Sullivan, Marlene Quinlan, and James R. Johnson. And that would be for one-year term. It's, it's an ad hoc.
Russ Fox is second that motion.
All those in favor? Joe DDI?
Russ Fox.
Doug Mogul. Do they want to be honest though?
Yes. Great. And I have to run into.
Anna Lee.
Yeah, Hanson.
Yeah, it's Hanson and she's excited about it too. So we want to get back to it based on the, the other information we had from last meeting. Right. So we want to get back. Thank you.
What board goals and objectives?
I, I looked at a couple that I thought it, and correct me if I'm wrong, that could be removed. I was looking at number 13 to be removed. Fire station masonry removed.
Uh, they're still doing the punch list for us.
They're still doing it?
Yeah, because the, the issue related to the front window can't be finished until we get a close of the labor date because the contractor that's gonna come in to address that issue there is finishing a school project.
Is that still leaking, Carl?
Well, it, it was greatly reduced by the maestery, but there's issues with the, the window structure too. So that still needs to be addressed. So we still have the clerk of the works working with the GC.
Okay, how about I'll try number 17?
Yep, that's fine. That's the.
Should we just make it 22?
What?
Should we just change it to 23?
Say it to 20. We usually do that later into the spring.
Alright.
And I think 18 you've, you've finished because you've made offers of employment to the two career paramedics and they're going through their physical and PAT process now.
Then I put down.
1919. You've settled with the police. That will have to go to a future special town meeting.
But over but the shout, right? Yeah. The Wi-Fi outside town hall?
Yes, we have finished that.
So we're all set on Wi-Fi now?
Yeah, but now we're looking at the, with our managed service provider, we're working on the broadcast capability that we've been talking about. I know we're experimenting with the owl tonight. There's some other stuff that we're working with Peter Cowles on at Jim. So that's our next project. The town meeting did authorize funding for that back in May. So we're gonna call that broadcast capability project.
So we're adding that?
Yeah.
And what are we calling it?
Broadcast capability project for municipal buildings.
How about number eight? No litigation, right?
Yeah, that's a.
Is that a goal?
Yeah, that's.
That's something to deal with, right? That's.
Yeah, if you want to take that.
Yeah.
Which one are we taking?
Number eight. Taking.
Yeah, because the planning board has, has made their decision on it. It's just a.
Okay.
It's under an appeal.
Since we have the DPW director here and some of the staff, can we talk about recycling, how it's going at this point?
Yeah, we want to know. We didn't think it's going pretty good.
Okay.
I don't have any numbers to share with you. I don't know what, what are you looking in particular?
Well, I think we put it down, Randy, when we knew that we were gonna have to start paying to get rid of our recyclables. You know, it'd be a, a larger cost than our trash. So and I'm seeing it's, it's gone up.
Yeah, I think, I know we, we do a survey every year, so it's posted through in our, in the annual book. And I think, if I remember right, our numbers were up last year. Our recyclables were up last year. As a percent of the total trash we bring in. So that is a good thing.
Has, I hope it's okay to continue.
Continue.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How about the recyclable, the returnables? Are we seeing a lot more of that coming out of it?
I don't know numbers, but I know the lines above comes, I think, every day to pick up on the cans and we give them to shed. We probably shut up this year. They got more containers. I think it's going well. I agree otherwise. So we are in the, the tendency to remind people of what their containers and that shed if they can. That helps us and helps the lines by the way. I could talk to the board if you want some more details in terms of how we've been doing on that.
And I know it was up on the sign down there asking people to to do that. And then I'll deviate if I could since. Don't, excuse me, transfer section stickers, compliance. You can find out about that.
For sure. Yeah, we just, obviously we just started new fiscal year. We're about five weeks into it.
Okay.
So I can get some numbers from the clerk's office and see where we're at.
Okay. I know we always kind of have a grace period, you know, people forget.
We do, absolutely.
Thank you.
People getting stickers is taking a few weeks for anyone buying online actually get those stickers. So that's an issue. If you have a receipt from a purchase, they're getting those stickers.
So they show you the receipts and I want it. It's just not here yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure you are.
Okay, alright. That's interesting.
Yeah, but the mail itself right now. You, you, I can know something that you would take it two weeks from.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's crazy.
Yeah, it's, it's out of control.
It is. Literally, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we start using Amazon or something. They can buy them on Amazon. In a truck. Forget about that cousin, but that's. Okay.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Chris.
Congamon Road reconstruction final stages and substantial completion. I, I, I guess that since they're not gonna charge us any more than the 300,000 that they're already trying to get from us, should we change that to instead of Congamon Road reconstruction final stages or should we change it to negotiations and possible legal action?
Well, that's, that number's a lot lower. Whatever number Randy's already paid out to date is the final number. So it's not gonna be anywhere near 300. I think it's what, 160 maybe or something?
Two thirty seven.
Yeah, but we're done with that.
I was sounding like almost.
So they said verbally, we were at the meeting, right? Verbal, they said, yeah, we're done with.
Yep, that's a rush.
Do you want to keep bossing?
So.
Hopefully it's done.
Did they actually finish off the grass on the corners and not? Yeah.
They talked about doing that this year, right, Randy? The punch list issues.
They said that's the last remaining item is finish up the one we see.
So if you want, Russ, we could, we could take the word final stages, substantial completion and put down awaiting masti OT closeout.
Okay, just go waiting game.
I just wrote all over but the shout.
No, we didn't allow shouting.
Yeah. Disappointing.
Well, the company won't be doing it for a train the other time.
They're out of business.
I was gonna add Suffolk PD slate roof and cupola assessment. So I'm waiting to hear back from Lee Hamburg on scope services. And then on 21 town hall roof replacements, the IRP for design services had already gone out. The results came in on the 29th and those are being reviewed and there's a meeting this week with the the clerk of the works, the building inspector, find a valid plan, commission and myself to review the different firms.
No, I think we gotta pick a list.
It's time to move on page though.
Work to add stuff on as you go along your course of the year.
Yeah, I'm sure it can. Anyone else with new business? No, sir. Carl, anything for new business?
No, that was when we talked about the, the roof thing. That was gonna be the stuff that was bringing you up to speed on this channel. For new business.
So we talked about old business, right? Do you have any more business?
Yep.
Let's talk about old business.
Just a couple of things. One was on hybrid zoom. Somebody brought up that tonight. Did you?
No, it was hybrid zoom or is that?
No, it was Joanne.
Right.
I don't know. She's still.
And I know Jim was looking into that.
Well, doing the kind of thing. This is a first step, right? We've had problems with the way that this room was set up and the, our technical abilities to do hybrid zoom that worked for the people in the room or the people remote. It seems like we could do either, but not both. So this is a trial in a big room, which is actually a much bigger room than this device is, it is set up to work for, but it seems to be working very well. We're going to, we've procured a few of these things. We're going to try to get the boards trained so that they can offer a hybrid Zoom capability because you're right, there are boards that have been doing all three, some in person, some remote, some hybrid, week over week. That doesn't work for people for consistency. And then, and I talked about this our last meeting as well. There's, there can be meetings back to back. One's in person, one's Zoom only. Well, you, you can't actually do that. A person couldn't go to both meetings because you couldn't attend one in person and then jump on a Zoom unless you do it like from your car or something. So I actually think that the hybrid Zoom is gonna be the way to go. We're gonna try to enable all the boards and commissions to be able to do it. Technically, it's very easy with this device. I attended a seminar, was that last week or the week before? About different, what other towns and cities are doing for this. They all are using this type of device and it's worked splendidly for them. So rather than reinvent the wheel, we're gonna give this a try. I did test it with the select board secretary a couple of weeks ago. I tested it with the planning board chair a week ago. This Thursday, Ag is gonna do a hybrid Zoom meeting as a test. Their actual meeting will be hybrid and that's one board that had done all three. So we're gonna, that'll be in the land use room, I believe, hybrid. But the goal is to enable every board and commission to be able to do hybrid Zoom. So in person or remote, depending on the person's preference.
We can't force them to do hybrid, correct?
I am, I actually did pose that very question to town council. I'm awaiting their answer. You know, we as a board, and before I brought it back to you, but this board several years ago did make it a policy that every board make an audio recording of their meetings and submit that audio recording to the town clerk. I don't see any difference to me, but I want town, town council's opinion before I made a recommendation to the board of making, if we enable the technology such that it's dead nuts easy to do, why can't every board and commission offer hybrid Zoom? It provides the video recording for, that can be uploaded to YouTube so people can see the meetings after. It provides the audio recording automatically. It enables remote participation. It improves transparency. I don't see the downside to hybrid Zoom if you can make it work. I think that there were problems with the way we were trying to do hybrid Zoom. Then you put 300 people in this room, 200 people remote with a, you know, a small camera and it just wasn't optimal, right? This, when you have 15 people in the room and/or in the land use room or even the board of selecting conference room, this type of device plus a television screen will enable that to work and be smooth and efficient. That's why, Joanne, that's why I asked how you could hear us before to get some feedback from remote folks, how, how they're hearing people in the audience. And, and for those that are in the audience, I'm pretty sure you could hear the folks remote clearly and see them. So that's, I'd like to continue to drive it to hybrid Zoom as long as the government allows it and, under the open meeting law and, and encourage as much as possible and use a carrot rather than a stick and say, okay, here's the owl and, you know, it plugs into the computer, you turn it on and off you go. It's no different than using the camera in your laptop just to set the thing on a table. Or how does that work? Anyone can do it. So if we enable that, maybe more boards and commissions will adopt it. Right now, just the way we're doing it, it's just not optimal. This makes it a lot better. We've ordered a few of these now. We bought this one. And this is the first meeting we've ever used it on. So, and I showed a couple of people before the meeting tonight how to set it up, how to do it. So hopefully we can continue with that. Planning board is going to use it tomorrow, I believe, and Ag on, is it Wednesday or Thursday, when is the day they're meeting this? Don't quote me. I don't remember when they're meeting this. It's on the town website, but they're gonna use it as well. I set up Mr. Hanson who's all set. And then your point, I think you mentioned it earlier, Mr. Chairman, you know, the difference between the audio recording and the official signed and voted minutes by a board. We're fortunate as a board, we meet every other week or during the winter, we meet every week. So our minutes are usually a week behind, right? Other boards that meet once a month, if they don't board every other week and they have a full agenda, they don't get to their minutes and then it carries over. So it could be three to six months for a board to actually clock in their minutes with the town clerk, which is when they show up on the town website. So yes, it's unfortunate that, but at least now with the recordings that we've always had that we were posting to YouTube and on the website, and now with the Zoom, when we had the video, we've started posting all the videos direct to the website. At least people have that resource. Up until the pandemic, you didn't have that at all either. So you had to wait for those minutes to come out. So that, I think it's better. It can always be better. Boards need to continue to, to drive that, you know, getting their minutes done. But, you know, I guess we can. Yeah, I give the planning board half a break. They were, they kind of had some very, very long meetings over the last several months. The videos are out there for everybody to see. I'm sure they'll catch, and their secretary moved and the planner retired. So I give them half a pass, but they'll be, they'll be caught up in a matter of weeks as well with their minutes and so on.
Right.
But and other boards, they generally get to them, but your Board of Appeals meets twice a month. So their meetings, their minutes by definition have to be a month behind. Historical might be once a month or CPC doesn't meet for six months. Their meetings can't be up to date until they met. And they didn't meet for six months. So there's not gonna be any benefit.
The Board of Appeals doesn't have a hearing to hold. They.
They don't meet.
They won't meet. So that, that may only be once a month.
Correct, correct.
But the bottom line is we're not enforcing them to do hybrid. So if, if a certain board is just gonna meet in person, so be it. And it's unfortunate if you had wanted to see them, you know, it is what it is, but.
Well, I think there's two, like I said, I think rather than mandate it and just be an over.
And I'm fine.
But I think you can, if you make it simple and it's unobtrusive, right now, the way we do it, it's obtrusive. Everybody's gotta have a laptop and we've got it. You know, you can. Jim has to come in and everything else. If we make it unobtrusive, that literally it's things sitting in the conference room, you plug it into a singular laptop and the meeting is automatically, you know,
Yeah, well.
off to the races. I think people will do it, right? And, and it's up to the public to make it known to the chair of that board or commission that, hey, I would like for you to attend your meetings as a citizen of the town, right? Be vocal about it. And that can be effective too. Rather than, you know, your board of selectmen saying you have to do this, you know, we can find out whether that's legal or not, but I think it'd be better to have people encouraged to do it and there's no downside to doing it. They gotta make the audio recording anyway. And if it's as unobtrusive as this, why wouldn't you do it?
Me and you and every board helping for a year and a half.
Yeah, on Zoom.
On Zoom. And now that it's.
And now, now they're all remote.
Yeah, yeah.
And yeah, I haven't either. I stopped by as they were checking. And yeah, I haven't either, I stopped by as they were checking in because I was late for something else just to say hello, but yeah. But that meeting should be hybrid, there's no reason not to be. Council on Aging, I get it, that's a tough one to do on Zoom, but if they had this hybrid, they can do it.
Yeah.
Right? Yep, so and there's people that aren't comfortable yet coming to Town Hall and with everything else that's going on, we may go, you know, we might go in the wrong direction. So having this capability is going to be hugely important.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from the whole business review? Nothing else on any business side?
That's enough, I'm out soon.
Mr. Steiner, are you?
No, that's good, I have the, as you know, the American Recovery Plan money, that's still, that's carried under your goals and objectives list too. Because at some point you have to determine in terms of eligible projects, where you want to allocate those dollars.
That's in this, in here, right? Yeah, and we have, I wanted to allocate that before, so we don't, we don't use it, we don't lose it type of thing.
Well, I think that they'd like the, to see those decisions made by the fall, and then you'll get a second allocation next year. And then maybe, there could be additional funds coming, because the issue we have is that we're in a. We're a non-entitlement committee, but we're also in an area where our county government was abolished. So they're trying to determine if we're going to be getting the benefit of funds that would have been going to a county government. That could be divided up to all communities within that former jurisdiction.
Gotcha. Okay.
See broadband is on there, so that's good.
Waterline, sewer line, they're all eligible items. And I think that's separate, eventually there's going to be another infrastructure bill coming out of Congress in the next week or so.
They say anyway, yeah.
And that's going to have money for roads, and I think that like even more broadband money and so forth. So, and it takes time.
A work session thing, or should we, when do we really want to, because you got three months to get through this, right? It's a big policy, that's a huge policy decision.
Right, you've got to, you know, determine how you want to allocate those things, you have needs.
Yeah.
That's clear, you have infrastructure needs all over.
Yeah.
So it won't be that hard to get to that number.
True, but you want to spend it in a few places, not all.
Exactly.
In one place.
Yeah, especially if you've got projects that are ready to go, that's what's going to be.
Yeah, the shovel ready, yeah.
Yeah.
Permanent shovel ready, whatever.
Alright, so if we don't do anything after the biggie, we'll have to have on this. So nothing else, we are good. Folks, we're going to go to executive session now and not to reconvene. Thank you all for coming. We're going to move to go in the executive session to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with manual personnel to not reconvene in open session. One executive session to conduct collective bargaining session. My personnel to not reconvene in open session. One executive session, this was strategy respect to collective bargaining, that the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to not reconvene in open session. We do one executive session, this was strategy respect to potential threatened litigation, that the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation. And to not reconvene in open session. A person shall have the right against unreasonable, such as serious interference with their privacy, the superior court shall have jurisdiction and equity. To enforce such right and in connection, they are supposed to award damages. Joe DDI.
Russ Fox.
Doug Mogul.
Thank you, folks, and have a good night.